I'm sorry.
We'll call this meeting to order this afternoon and let the record show that all board members are present along with our superintendent and board attorney. Would you please stand for prayer with Ms. Dunell and we will follow with the pledge.
Most gracious in heaven and Father, Lord, we thank you for your grace and Father God, we thank you for your mercy. Lord, Father God, we just ask that you would be with us tonight, Lord Jesus. We ask for wisdom, Lord, Father God, and we just ask for understanding, Lord Jesus. We ask that you will cover us and give us the guidance and direction and that we will do your will when it comes to the business of the board and that which we will complete in the night, Lord Jesus. I ask that you would give all those safe travels back to their destination, Lord Jesus, Father God. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the list is adoption of the agenda this evening. I don't know that, I don't, do we have any corrections or anything? I think we're good, but do we have a motion?
A motion.
All right, Ms. Agner makes that motion. Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. The approval of the minutes, our last minutes on April the 9th, the regular school board meeting and executive session.
Motion.
Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Who was here over here? Ms. Dunell seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. Well, we have a presentation this evening from Ms. Ann Edenfield, area's senior vice president of Gallagher Insurance and update and overview. So yours.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. It's great to see you. I'm typically involved every quarter with the insurance committee. So this time around, they thought it might be a good idea for me to come and just briefly talk because I know you have a full agenda, but just to give everybody a little bit of a feel for how the health plan operates, what it, how it flows. For those of you that have been here and been involved for a while, you have a self-funded health plan. And a self-funded health plan simply means that the district absorbs that some of the risks in exchange for premiums. But you are protected, so it's not as if you're just out there in case you had something catastrophic. We purchase stop-loss coverage, which again comes in at a particular level and stops your risk, and then it goes on with a fully insured carrier all the way through the catastrophic risk. And we look at that every year. So I just want you to know that the cycle, your health plan is, begins on 10/1 and it goes through September 30th. So right now, we just finished the end of the second quarter, so we're halfway through. It's hard to believe, but we're halfway through this plan year. We track those claims. And again, I'm Gallagher. I'm not Florida Blue. I'm not the dental carrier. I have no, no insurance. You know, I am your broker, your consultant. So what Gallagher does is we are an impartial party that is here to protect and look after your financial best interests. So I'm not tied to anyone. And part of that process means that when we go out to market, we're looking at everyone. We're looking at Capital Health Plan. We are looking at United. We are looking at Florida Blue, both fully insured and continuing to be self-funded because they're your administrator of the claims, whether you're fully insured or self-funded. So all of those factors come into play at this time every year. So we have marketed your health plan for the last two years because your health plan has operated in our world, we call it a little hot. That simply means you've had a lot of claims and you've had some particularly high-dollar claims and those drive up your utilization. And so being self-funded doesn't insulate you from that dynamic. You still have to renew and they're still looking at your claims so that we can look to see how we're going to renew at your best options. So what we're doing is we're looking at all of those particulars and we're also looking at your health plan design. You have two planned, plans to choose from. And so we look at all kinds of modeling scenarios. What would it look like if we did away with one of the plans and made everybody pick another plan? What would it do if we added others? So I mean, we do modeling so that we also know where we are. So I just want to let you know that as of March 31st, because those are the most recent claims that run down the cycle through Florida Blue, your health plan is operating well. So that's a nice thing to be able to report. And we have been in this scenario again for a couple of years where we were sitting here and we already knew it was a hot year, so we knew it was going to be a challenge. But so far, knock on wood, can't predict the last six months, but the first six months are looking good. So.
Can you give us some specifics as far as what percentage we're at as far as the, I guess, the premiums to what we paid out?
What I know is that so far you have paid out 1.1 million in claims for this plan year. I would have to get Ashley to actually give a report on that. I might have. If I take the claims that have come in and I add the fixed cost, because those are purely the claims, then you have a cost that you pay Florida Blue to administer those claims. And then you have a cost that we pay that carrier that's taking on that catastrophic risk because that's an insurance program. There's a premium for that. Then taking into account what you pay EMB, who is the company that does the data records and they do your enrollment every year. So all of these elements, there are a lot of, lot of moving parts into the administration of a self-funded health plan. But so far, one point, um, 1.4 million in total plan costs and taking in some pharmacy rebates and those type things, the funding has been 1.9 million. The reason that's a little artificially good, because right now it looks like, woo, we've got $500,000 that we're to the good. That starts catching up because you have two months toward the end of the year that you don't take out employee contributions and board contributions don't go in. So I project, as we sit here today, if I annualize the fixed expenses and I factor in where I think your claims are going to be, I think you're going to end up to the good of about $300,000. Again, that is a total projection, but if I'm looking at that and I'm factoring in some things, I think you're going to end up somewhere about $300,000 to the good. We haven't had that scenario for a couple of years, so that's why I'm kind of excited. So a couple of things that Gallagher is looking at doing and we're going to be working with the insurance committee. We are going to propose that we do a pharmacy audit because once that pharmacy is set up through Florida Blue and Prime, if no one is internally looking at it, then if there's something off or what, we want to catch it. So those are things that we are going to recommend that we do and look and, and perform a pharmacy audit. The other activity that we're looking at is we are going to do a full marketing of your stop-loss. You have been with a company for that catastrophic risk called Symetra, and Symetra has been the carrier for many years. I marketed that two years ago and Symetra continued to be the most competitive. This year, we're going out and we are going to look again to make sure that Symetra continues to be the most competitive. The reason I feel favorable in that direction is because you are having a good plan year and they want to keep you. It's like any other product. But the one thing I can say about Symetra, excuse me, is they've been extremely fair in the years that your catastrophic claims have been, to the point where they certainly have lost money. But they understand that, so when they go into these arrangements, they understand that it's a long-term relationship, going to be good years, there're going to be not-so-good years, there're going to be bad years. Y'all have kind of weathered that storm a little bit. So I'm hoping now as we go in, not only will we get some competitive numbers out of Symetra, but they will have competition. So we will look, make sure that they understand that there are other stop-loss carriers that are going to be looking at your plan as well. We roll all of those things up and we present to the board sometime around June, as early as we can, so that I know decisions need to be made when we start talking about what does this mean to employee contributions. Because sometimes we've had to come out and say, hey, we need a bump, we need an increase. I don't fool myself that the 500,000 as we sit here today is definitely not a direct function of the board increasing contributions, which you have done, and certainly employees have increased contributions. But what you have done, where we predicted, where we consulted with you to say, this is where you need to go, it's working. So that's the good news. The other good news that I'd like to say is that Florida Blue does have a well-being program. It's called Better You. That Better You program has come out in the past and done biometric screenings. We are proposing that we do biometric screenings again this year. Biometric screenings are simply an effort for early detection. Every, anyone that is in this position and in this industry will tell you that the best way to combat health plan claims is to catch the health claims when they are medical conditions on the early side. So we want to continue to do that because we want to, once those biometric screenings are in, Florida Blue will then give us an aggregate only, nothing is detailed. You, as a participant, will get information to show where your numbers are, how your blood pressure looks, what's your BMI. So you will get some personalized information if you participate, but the district only gets aggregate. This many people participated, this percentage of individuals were identified for possible high cholesterol, high blood pressure, high BMI. So what that does is it then allows the insurance committee and me to make recommendations on, okay, what can we do? You know, because the education is pivotal to people making choices and changes to their life, to their habits, to their behaviors. That's not easy and that's not a quick fix. We also know for every person that we get excited about weight loss, there's just that many people that are off the wagon. It's hard. Behavior changes are hard. And we, for those of us that have been around for a while, we know they're hard. So we, but we want to keep, continue to educate, we want to continue to support, we want to provide whatever tools Florida Blue provides for their well-being program to make sure that the district absolutely has everything that you need to be healthy and we can impact the health plan. So are there any questions? That's kind of a very high-level overview of what we do. We're right in the timing of when we do it, so we're kind of sitting right on top of doing all of these programs and processes that were in place. We work directly with Shanna, Mrs. Bashir's, and we work with Ashley Valentine, that's kind of, and then the entire insurance committee. And we continue to kind of talk and hash these things out. We also talk about Teladoc. We talk about it every quarter when we come in. The more people that can participate in Teladoc, the better. It's a great program. They offer a lot of services. And if we can keep people out of a doctor's office where most people are there because they're sick, a doctor's office tends to be a little germy. I know they try to keep it clean, but can't help it. People are there because they're sick. So if we can keep people using Teladoc, that is an excellent, it's a cost saver for the health plan, it's a better outcome for you, the individual, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say catastrophic, what?
Any claim, in, any claim that exceeds 150,000.
Okay.
So for every person that's covered under that plan, if I'm, if I'm your employee and my husband and three children, each of us has $150,000 deductible, if you will. The district covers the first 150,000. Claims that exceed 150,000 on up to millions, those are fully insured.
Okay.
Okay, so when we talk about large claims, that's, that's the threshold that I'm talking about, 150,000. And we look, Symetra and any other stop-loss carrier will give multiple proposals. They'll come in and say, okay, this is the cost if you stay at 150. This is the cost if you increase your liability and y'all take on 200 or 175,000 or 200,000 or 250. It's like any other insurance program. The more risk you absorb, the less your premiums because you're taking on more risk, just like homeowners, you know, the more, the more you do. So we get multiple quotes every year. Last year, the quote to stay at 150, it wasn't advantageous for y'all to take on more risk, so I recommended you didn't and you renewed where you were and therefore y'all are now capped. As we sit here today, you've had three individuals that have exceeded 50% of the 150, so they have had claims paid in excess of 75,000. Those are the high-cost claimants that we're monitoring and we're watching those unfold.
Any other questions?
I just got one more question.
Yes, yes.
Now, I know you, is workers comp, does that fall under what you manage?
Not, not me.
Okay.
That's under FISB.
That's FISB, okay, all right.
All right, any others?
I've got one question.
Yes.
In, in the catastrophic and the claims that you're talking about.
Yes.
Do you keep a record of how many is actually employed versus the family?
Yes. We, we know that currently the three that you're looking at, one is a spouse, two are employees. Of the three individuals that have exceeded the 75,000, which is 50% of your catastrophic amount, one is a spouse and two are employees. So we do, we, we look at that.
Look at that.
We do.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the pharmacy audit, is there a report that comes from that that lets us know the best place to get our prescriptions filled?
No, they're, they're looking at, are the claims being processed properly? Are the claims being processed according to the contract that is in place by Florida Blue? But they don't direct you to a particular pharmacy. There are tools that you can use. I think GoodRx is a tool that you can use. Anybody has access to GoodRx. If you utilize mail order, they now use Amazon as the mail order provider. And so you can go on Amazon like you're shopping for a Teflon frying pan and you type in what drug you're taking and it'll go out and search and it'll say, these are the best prices and it'll come back to you. And, and it is tied into the, they're called accumulators of your health plan so that it'll go toward any deductible, copay, co-insurance, what have you. So there is some connectivity because Florida Blue and Prime use that Amazon provider as their mail order distributor. But GoodRx is, still continues to be the best tool out there to direct you to the lowest cost prescription.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. This is nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, this brings us down to items of interest by the public. If we have anyone who would like to address the board, now would be the time. And all the members of the public are advised that this is another time to discuss personnel matters or specific allegations against a staff member or student. The board cannot discuss such matters in a public forum and it is the responsibility of the superintendent to bring such matters to the board's attention at the appropriate time and place. And if you'd like to address the board, we ask if you would, please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone this evening? If not, then we move on. The consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda and this brings us down to our action items this evening. And the first action item is 11.00 and it is the approval of the school calendar for 24-25.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion.
My second.
Ms. Agner seconds it. And, um, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. The next action item would be an establishment of physician. Ms. Jody Tillman, director of the BBTC, is requesting to establish a new custodian physician, an eight-hour, 12-month position. And this position would start as soon as possible due to the expansion of BBTC and future buildings.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, I guess I'll ask Shelby. It says, and future building, so if it's a full-time position now, what, what will be, how will you be able to absorb new buildings if you start it now and that it's a full-time position?
Every building, H. We.
Also my hair on. So getting more active. Moving that new position into.
Are there two existing, um, are there two existing custodial positions, eight hours?
Yes.
Okay, so y'all no longer have the four-hour position out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what Ms. Carlton's point was, if it's full-time now, how will they keep, and it's needed now, the full-time's needed now with the new buildings, will we have to hire additional at that time?
Our biggest concern now is. Of those responsibilities, not every building is getting intended.
Is there a reason why this is now a need other than the fact of the future buildings? If this has been a concern?
Yes. That, that more pressure on our two custodians, that's also a time constraint. Our two custodians are currently, they're doing a great job, both of those, Mr. Deborah, Ms. Deborah and, they just need more.
So Ms. Bashir's, with, um, the enrollment with positions down there being based off enrollment, far as summer programs, what is enrollment looking like? Do you guys look like you will be offering? I know we just had the appointments on the, um, what we approved under consent, but right now, do you guys look like it's going to be a full enrollment for those summer positions and it won't be contingent?
Yes, but also the establishment of this custodia, custodial position is based off of square footage, so that's what we look at when we talk about how many custodians are assigned to each site on their square footage. And so when they added that H building, that's what put them over to need the third custodian. Is that my answer on that?
Kinda.
It sounds like, though, there is a possibility that with the addition of firefighter and advanced manufacturing, that there will be a greater need, that adds more square footage.
Well, we'll have to see. It's all based on those numbers. Dan, can you offer any input on that?
What programs would y'all be running in the summer, Ms.?
That's what I'm saying, for, right now, there's four programs and is there going to be a need for four custodians? I meant three custodians in the summer for four programs?
Who's, who's currently taking care of the grounds?
One of the, one of the custodians.
Okay.
I do have another question.
Has been maintained.
Are these all, these are all daytime jobs? You don't have any that would be working the, like, the, the later shift? Okay.
So is it just two positions that's going to be 12 months and one 11 months, Shanna? Or?
He's looking.
I just thought our enrollment changed during the summer, so that's what I'm wondering, is there going to be a need?
They're both 12 months.
The other schools, there's one 12 month and then the rest are.
Right, so I thought in the summer, our programs far as enrollment decreased, so I'm just wondering, would there be the need for the summer for?
She's not questioning their custodians.
No, I'm just wondering, is there going to be a need for three during the summer months? That's what I'm asking.
What I heard was that they do a lot of stripping and waxing and then, of course, the, um, the grounds maintenance will be probably heavy through the, the summer.
Now, would this position be funded, grant-funded or workforce dollars? I mean, will it be general fund or workforce dollars, general?
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and second for this new position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. All righty, this brings us down now to the items of interest by the superintendent and board and Ms. Bashir's.
Um, I would like to ask the board if we can move our meeting on the 21st, Mar, I'm sorry, May 21st to May 28th. And then after that, if we can, um, have the one meeting in June, which will be on June 11th. But otherwise, we'll have to back-to-back.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine.
Okay, so what you're proposing and asking is that the 21st meeting of May be changed to the 28th?
Yes, sir.
And then just one meeting in the month of June for the 11th?
Correct.
Regular time?
That May 28th meeting is one.
Right, but is the school board meeting a regular time?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Um, other than that, lots going on. Tended, um, baseball, senior recognition night last week. Tonight, we have the band concert where we have the middle school and the high school working together. It's at the middle school auditorium at 6:30, 6:30, so that's tonight. Lots of other things coming up. And we do have a calendar of events that the board requested, and I'll send it to you. She's, she's trying to pull it up. She'll place it in, Shanna will send it, okay, I'll send it to your emails. But we do have everything coming up because the, all the principals got together and just put it on one, one big page for you all to make sure that everything's, um, good in one place. Um, let's see what else we have. I think that's midterms are going out tomorrow in our district. I mean, there's other things coming up next with FHJ banquet, lots of other things, but we'll have it all in that one condensed list for you, so that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Agner?
I just appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I appreciate all that y'all do. I know that it's getting kind of hairy toward the end of school. Everybody's got so much on their plate and juggling a lot of things, so I'll be praying that, uh, keep the sanity for a little bit longer and that I look forward to graduation and all the good things that are going to be happening and everybody have a good summer.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mathis?
Yes, I, well, myself and Brenda and Deidre, we attended the, Ms. Bashir's, we all attended the military ball and that was so much fun. It was really, um, a, a great night. I enjoyed, I sat at the table with some seniors and I had a lot of fun catching up with them and hearing about their future plans and just their camaraderie. I loved that. Congratulations to Mr. Bray for being recognized, a winter garden also. We had a magic show at Steen Hutchey School last Friday and it was really, really good and I would love for her, the lady, to come up here for the schools up here. So if anybody's interested in that, message me, I have the, her phone number and I can get the information to you for that and, um, the kids will love it. She's a real pro. It was a ton of fun. And, um, I think that is it for me right now.
Okay, all right. Ms. Dunell?
Um, I don't really have anything. I actually, on Saturday, got the opportunity to attend a home-going celebration for, um, long time, lone servant, um, FSBA employee, Ms. Patricia Peterson. It was a very beautiful service. Several school board members throughout the state of Florida was in attendance, so that was just very nice and it was, um, they actually, I got to meet the former FSBA executive director. He was there along with Andrea and some other past FSBA employees, so it was just beautiful. But I know several people in the district may, have been aware of Ms. Patricia Peterson. She had been with FSBA for 35 years, so it was a beautiful service. But other than that, that's all I have.
I forgot to congratulate all the children at the, or the participants at the Big Bang Techno Skills.
Skills USA.
And I think we walked away with some gold and some silvers and some bronzes and, yeah. Yeah, they always do.
I'm sure we'll hear about it.
That's going to be on the next. That's going to be on the next, next meeting.
Yeah.
All right, do some recognition, so, okay. Ms. Carlton?
Yes, I think for the Gallagher report tonight, it's always good to hear where we're at, and especially when it's looking more favorable than, yeah. And kind of agree with the others on the Military Ball and was able to stop in at the BBT Open House and the Job Fair or Career Fair, kind of both, that was very, very good. And on Saturday, I also was able to go, stop by the disaster day they were having out of, there at the Forest Capital Park for a little while. And hopefully, the next, maybe the next meeting or the next, we'll have a FISB report that 'll show what we're looking like when we get some final numbers and all in, so we'll have that available.
We meet on the same.
Okay, that it? All right, well, thank you. Just a couple of things. We've got graduation coming up, and also, it won't be long before we turn around, school's going to be back in, and football season and so forth. And Dan, I'm here, I'm glad you're here, I just want to ask you a question. How are we doing on the stadium out there as far as what has to be done, and when is it going to be done?
They have released, finally released the, the press box and the sign by, calling for him today, where he is with it. I've been calling him every four, five days, and last week that they got the time, then approval to begin to work on the design for those two. Trying to push him to get both those done. This is really close and tight here, but it's. Master team, with the master manager team.
Okay, so basically, we don't know.
We don't know, but I think he said his goal was to have it ready for football season next year, but that's.
I mean, I understand, we got a goal, I understand that, but we, we're not, it's not, it's not in our hands to proceed or anything of the nature. Okay.
Only out of our hands, but we are pressing, you know, to get to the bad, and he should now, engineer comes around, something, he's got other things on his schedule, but hopefully he will put this as a priority.
My question is, do we have a Plan B? How are we going to start football?
We're all Plan B right now.
No, I'm talking about for football season, if it's not finished.
Yeah. So we would just keep on doing the waiver, like, right now? I mean, we, we had football season all last year without it being rebuilt, and that's.
Okay, but if they start work during the summer, would it still allow for, you know, if they start work and it's not done, like, by football season and they're out, they're still working, will we still be able to have games out there? I think that's what Bunny's question was.
Question, not about that, though. I want, did we get any resolution on the roofs?
That's another problem, I know.
They said it's more costly.
Yeah.
Cost-effective to replace them.
The GPO.
Other one was to hurry it up and, and then put. They're still, they're still trying to put finalizers in, they, they had it last week.
Last Friday, as a matter of fact.
So we don't have.
Well, I get, I guess, you know, and the reason for those questions, because first of all, we got something within, basically, four weeks from, from now, and that's graduation. So we know, we know that, that I guess one side of the stadium will not be usable, period.
No, but we're fine, that's, we haven't used that. The only thing that we've used that side of the stadium for, for the past few years is students, and so Heather has another plan that will just be able to have chairs out there for those students, or have them sit with their families like they did the year of COVID. We'll be fine for graduation.
Think we'll be fine there, okay. But anyway, it's just that little wrinkle, which is a big wrinkle to a degree.
We've got that solved.
And, but, okay, well, if there's any, you know, y'all, between superintendent and Dan, keep us updated, any good news, anything, because a lot of people in the community really are asking about that, and, you know, I, I have no answer.
Jesse and I, and engineer have talked about wanting one in the press box, and I think all of that's doable. I think that is going to be real easy, hopefully, so. I think that will be doable. And one understanding with bleachers, they are going, it'll be safety efficient to replace the bleachers and put in new ones. The problem's going to be there is, is what is the wait, waiting time for those bleachers? Most, most items like that are 10, 12 weeks out.
Okay.
It's definitely jeopardized.
Well, may have to do it the old-fashioned way, you come and stand and watch, if you want.
Bring your own chair.
Bring your own chair, okay. Well, and, but keep us up, updated, if you will, because, as I said, there's, there's folks in the community that this is, you know, their, their thoughts or their concerns or interests, and so we need to, and if anything we can do, certainly, I don't know what it is, but if we can do something, let us know. It's a busy time of the year. The only other question I have is what do we know about baccalaureate? Do we know anything?
Yes, we do.
It's, see if it's on that. Hang on, I can look on my list, yes, we do. We do, we do, hang on one second. I can tell you, it's on the, the list that we have for you. It is May the 15th at 6:00 PM. She doesn't have on here which church it's at.
I've got First Baptist, is that still? Does anyone know?
Nope, I don't know, but May 15th and.
But it definitely is the 15th, that's on Wednesday evening.
And this is on the counter that we've, that I've gotten, that we're going to give you all.
I was told by someone it was the 15th, but it didn't know exactly what time and the place, and I.
At 6:00 PM, but I, it's, she doesn't have on here which church it's at. We got to, we got to wait.
All right, again, and, and, and the school calendar, I'm pleased that we do have a holiday for the veterans. I, I really, really do, and I think, I think in the community, there's going to be a lot of folks who are pleased to be able to see that again, recognizing them. Okay, other than that, I appreciate everybody coming and all the reports, all the things that's been shared, and so do we have a motion and second that we adjourn?
Motion.
Ms. Carlton makes that motion, Ms. Donnell seconds it. If you're in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? This meeting is adjourned.